Order.
Mayor Beeson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stover.
Here.
Commissioner Spillman.
Here.
Commissioner Tweedy.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Everybody, please rise. Go for that. Advocation.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you so much for your goodness to us. Thank you for the blessings of the day already, and we pray that you would descend upon this meeting. We pray that you bless our commission. We thankful that they are willing to serve. I pray that you give them wisdom. Pray that you be with each one that comes before them, give them clarity of thought. And I just pray that you bless our citizens throughout this city, and I just pray that you bless all the workers. And we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions?
No, mayor, there's not.
Move that we approve the agenda is written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of visitors and staff.
Recognize Jess Jess Helpingstein in earning his Class Four wastewater certification from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
Evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. I bring before you Jess, like to recognize him for the accomplishments he's made. And since joining City, Jess demonstrated a strong work ethic, a positive attitude, and commitment to continuous learning. He regularly attends classes and conferences, diligently prepares for examinations, and has invested substantial time into professional development. At the wastewater treatment plant, Jess has been an asset in multiple areas, including equipment monitoring for preventive maintenance and laboratory operations. Over the past year, he has taken the lead on accredited testing, record-keeping, and sampling, proving himself reliable and detail-oriented. He's also begun preparing for his Class Four water certification, further showing initiative and dedication to his profession. Jess consistently goes above and beyond expectations, often working late or after hours to ensure the plant operates smoothly. His achievements highlight both his personal dedication and the high standards of the city's utility staff. This is a big deal. There's very few Class Fours in the state. So thank, well, that's the number you got on. Class Four wastewater. Two hundred and fifty people in the state only have this, and Jess is also going for his Class Four in water, which if you have both your water and your wastewater, I'd say maybe less than fifty people have that in your state.
So how long has Jess been with us?
Wow.
Oh, awesome.
Kyle says you're a brain. You're very smart. That's that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you turn this way?
Thought it was gonna be easy, didn't you?
Yeah. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for being in Arc City.
That's awesome.
Yeah. I tell you, he's smart.
Kyle, do you have your Class Four?
Working on it.
Very good starter.
I didn't mean to get you that bad.
He's gonna get there before you do, Kyle.
Yeah. Good, good. Thank you. Okay, consent agenda?
Would you like me to read through these, Mayor?
If we just, yeah, because we'll just accept them all at once.
Okay. Item number one is to approve the September twelfth, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes and the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes as written. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to accept a quote submitted by Hack Company to purchase materials and service equipment at the water treatment facility for an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And then item number three is a resolution authorizing the City of Arc City to approve a temporary extension of license permits at Gloria's Bar located at one-one-two-one South Summit Street to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property pursuant of KSA four-five dash two-six oh eight during Gloria's cornhole tournament event on Saturday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. And then item number four is the same as three, except for the event date will be on Saturday, fourteen, March fourteenth of twenty twenty-six. And so the reason that one's on there is because the state had told her when she applies, if she had multiple dates, just list them and they would approve. But we do ours separately, just in case the date changes. So I did two separate resolutions on that for you to approve.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda is read.
Second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. New business.
Item number one under City Manager Department is an ordinance exempting the application of KSA four-one-dash-seven-one-nine D to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor at a designated area of Ben Givens Center, City Park, that always gets me, during Arcalala, October twenty-second through twenty twenty, twenty-second through the twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five. And this is a regular request item. They did go out for bids this year, and Gypsy Bevco will be serving common consumption as well as doing the beer garden.
It's same person last year.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the Arcalala can use here if you would like to, if you have any questions for them, or if any of them would like to speak.
If I was running the beer garden, I wouldn't want to do common consumption. I want to keep them there.
Yeah.
You might mention that to Bevco.
That's an awful small area for as many people as want to drink.
I think it's a little bit beneficial. You have a lot of people that said, I'll go down there and watch. It'd be nice to have a beer.
Yeah. It does.
Yeah, I'd want to keep them captive audience.
I think we're all just praying for good weather like last year.
Since we haven't had any problems, you know, in the past, and it's been a good deal for the public, I make the motion to order it's exempting the application of KSA forty-one-dash-seven-one-nine D to allow the sale of consumption of alcohol liquor at designated area of Ben Givens Center, City Park during Arcalala, October twenty-second through the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
I do have a question. I know last year, you can correct me on this, Chief, but we did have some people that were outside the common consumption area.
Yes, we had a few that went to the carnival.
I would.
Told them that they knew everything, had problems, they couldn't run with that.
Okay.
Part of the problem was some of the cups matched the cups from the carnival.
It's it's kind of been mentioned that we may be put up regular signs instead of on the sidewalk, just some kind of sign, temporary signs maybe on the sidewalk to keep them from going that way.
Yeah, I can, I can work on that.
Okay.
And sometimes it may not be the cup. Somebody might be just thinking they can get away with something.
And have to be your crowd, so I think it'll be fine. Okay. No further discussion? All in favor?
No, it's real roll.
Oh, roll call. I apologize. I did not see that.
Mayor Beeson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stover?
Yes.
Commissioner Spillman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Okay, number two?
Is a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to enter into a design-build agreement with Burns and McDonnell, Cass, Arkansas City WP, WTP venture, joint venture for Phase One of the Water Treatment Facility Green Sand Filter KDHE SRF Loan, Project Number Ten Fifty-Six, for an amount not to exceed one hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, so this is the next step in our green sand filter, the loan grant that we received from KDHE. So if you recall, we've given the loan with a forgiveness of two million eighty-five thousand dollars. We recently selected PEC to be our representative engineer firm, and then we went out for RFPs and then selected Burns and Mack and Cass to be the joint venture to do the project. So this is the next phase, is Phase One of their of their contract, and they will be to do the, basically the design work for the the project and then go out for RFPs on the project. So Brian Myers is here with Burns and Mack, and if he has anything he wants to talk about on that, or if you guys have questions for him.
So you'll be overlooking this whole project when we, over that two million dollars?
Yes, yes, sir. That would be the intent. And as Randy said, this is really Phase One of the project. So it's going to be doing the basic design, the pre-procurement aspects of the project, getting the proposals for the equipment and the labor necessary to put in the new green sand vessel, and then coming back to you with a with a proposal, a cost proposal, to do the balance of the project. The, some of the reasons that the the project is, you know, that sense of urgency, I guess, right now, is trying to look at getting the procurement done, you know, before the first of the year, so we could avoid any of the cost increases that are very likely to come after the first of the year. And with the grant through the SRF, there's some procurement requirements through BABA that we've got to look at, and we've got to make sure that we could work through that process too and be compliant and make sure we don't put at risk any of the grant funds that are made available for this project. As Randy said, this is a next step in one of the planned planned expansion components. So it, and it just came in an opportune time when there was funding, grant funding available for emerging contaminants, and it was a good fit. So that's why the project was moving forward at this time, and it'll set you up very nicely for the future. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Question, will they, you think that grant's gonna be enough? I mean, if things go up, I mean, oh, not two million dollars we got.
Absolutely. That's that's why the sense of urgency to try to get it and define what that cost is. You know, when when the original cost estimate was developed for the grant application, there was a fair contingency, knowing that these things don't happen overnight. The grant applications take time. We had to work with KDHE through that process, making sure they had the information they needed. So there was a good contingency in that, anticipating escalation. Tariffs obviously have created some unknowns in the market. So we hope we have those things covered. Those, that's one of the first things we'll be looking at. Once we work with city staff to define exactly what project they want from a control standpoint, a lot of it's already determined, but there's still choices the city will need to make, and then we'll hit that part of it and make sure we could make the budget fit, so.
Well, it gives about a third more capacity, I mean, far as water.
Essentially, third more capacity. One of the more important aspects of this is just redundancy from a maintenance perspective, more flexibility in the process. But yeah, as you start to look at increased demand in the future, it's going to set up and have that have that exact effect.
We're we're all in a green sand filter.
It's it's green sand vessel. It's it's the media, the green sand media that actually has the reaction to remove the iron and manganese through oxidation process. So, and that's, and that's really in the whole scheme of things with the RO plant. That's what protects the membranes. We have to get that iron and manganese out as pre, basically a pre-treatment step to protect the membranes in the actual RO treatment component, so.
Is that green sand treated with stuff before we start using it? I mean, are there things that we would have to procure from overseas, let's say, or from other than the United States?
That's that's the vendors we'll look at. This is a little bit different because we want to stay as consistent as we can with other equipment that's there. So we have to look at how they assemble their components. There's some ways you can look at compliance with BABA, whether it's an assembly or a piece of equipment, some ways you can work through that process. So we'll have to look at some of the, whether it's controls or the actual green sand vessel and make sure that it's going to fit the description of domestic procurement.
Well, this is, with a section we're gonna add, that will help us to keep our filtering system a lot longer, won't it? I mean, far as.
Yeah, as as far as the way the the system's operated, yes. I mean, you'll you'll have more capacity from that perspective. So so, yeah, if you were going to delay a backwash or or change your your cycle, you have that flexibility to do that. Yes, sir.
It's a must. We gotta have that.
It's it's part of the plan process, and yeah, just really good timing for this, so, yes, sir.
You've got some validation. Jesse, our Class Four guy in the back is shaking his head yes on it.
You've been validated. I was, I was reading the room.
Brain's thinking out.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. I make a motion for a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to enter into a design-build agreement with Burns and McDonnell, McDonnell slash Cass, Arkansas City WTP joint venture to Phase One of the Water Treatment Facility Greenland Filter KDHE SRF Loan Project Number Ten Fifty-Six for an amount not to exceed one hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number three?
A resolution approving a revised memorandum of understanding between the City of Arkansas City and Cali County, Kansas, regarding the use, activation, maintenance, and operation of outdoor warning sirens. Therefore, repealing Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four Oh Eight Three Six Two Eight.
So if you recall, a year ago in August of twenty twenty-four, we did an MOU at the county, clarified that the city's staff would set off sirens. The reason for that was a state statute puts that responsibility at the county level. So this 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 MO MOU now basically repeals that MOU from the past and and puts the responsibility for setting off the sirens back at the county level. That's where it's statutorily said anyway. So that's basically doing, putting the responsibility in. We're still responsible for the sirens, the maintenance of them, and all the costs of that. There just, it just puts the operation of when they're lit off on the county.
I know there was a lot of concern with elimination of a position, that this was gonna be a problem. So this is just us doing our due diligence and making sure that it's taken care of.
Move that we approve a resolution authori, approving a revised memorandum of understanding between the City of Arkansas City and Cali County, Kansas, regarding the use, activation, maintenance, and operation of outdoor warning sirens. Therefore, repealing Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four Dash Oh Eight Dash Three Six Two Eight.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number four?
Provide an update on signed roofing replacement contracts for city-owned properties damaged during the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five hailstorm.
Yeah, so this is an insurance item, and it's not something that the commission needs to prove. This is more for information and then also as a way for future folks to track this, because there'll be warranties and things on this roof, and this way, there's a place for people to go and find out the details. But, yeah, this just kind of lays out the roof, the cost of the roof repairs. At the end of the day, we had a fifty thousand dollar deductible that covered most of of all the roofs. The only, you know, you guys approved a little under two hundred thousand dollars to repair the city hall roof a while back. Insurance did not cover in part of that, the roof on this main building. The only piece that didn't cover was the over the garage, so we had to cover that plus the fifty thousand dollar deductible. There is a mistake in this, in the action item. So the Humane Society building was covered by insurance. So I'm sorry, we didn't catch that when this went out, but there was one thing that wasn't covered at the Humane Society, and that was the skylights. And the old skylights, they couldn't be replaced like they were, so we replaced them with the new, like the tubes, skylight tubes. And Winfield and Arc City will share the cost in in the skylight replacement fees. But the roof itself was covered with insurance.
Nice.
And you might ask, why does why does Arc City's insurance cover that building when it's co-owned by the two cities? Because the two cities also co-own the recycling center, and so the recycling center is under Winfield's insurance policy, and the Humane Society's under ours, and kind of keep everything.
That's fair enough. That was a question I'd had, so, and I know I'm gonna sound redundant here, but we were we were lucky enough that that fifty thousand, that wasn't per structure, that was for the city. Every structure that was in the city, it was covered with that.
Those days are long gone after this deal.
When our renewal comes around April, it'll be interesting to see what.
They'll put you on, building by building, I bet you.
But we'll see.
So we we were very fortunate.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And how many buildings do we have left?
To be finished? The, I know the Agribusiness Building, they're not, they won't do that, I believe, until spring. I think everything else is pretty well done now.
Golf course?
Spring.
It should be. Yeah, I I think the the majority of them, if there if there's anything not quite finished up, it isn't mine.
We're gonna wait on the Ag building till spring or?
Yes, that that was, but it had something to do with the humidity and and dew and stuff like that, and the type of, they're doing a stem type of a spray-on system.
Okay.
They have to have the right conditions.
Okay.
I don't believe it's leaking, it was just damaged.
Okay.
Thank you. So we don't need to, there's no, nothing on this. It's just informational purposes. All right, thank you, sir. Police Department, Chief.
So this item is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a twenty twenty-five Dodge Durango Pursuit Vehicle for the Arkansas City Police Department from Superior Emergency Response Vehicles, an additional required wiring system, utility car camera package, and vinyl decals from various suppliers for an amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-one cents.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, we're asking for your approval to purchase a new patrol vehicle to replace one of ours. Superior is the same company we used on the most recent purchase we had two months ago. And like I said then, they know how to install all the equipment, the lighting, and their bid is for the entire package, as far as like the cage, the console, the computer stands, the rifle lock. That includes everything. They did charge for installation on that, which is included in this bid. And then Sign Solutions out at Rob Carroll's will do the decal work, which they've done our decals for the past at least ten years. So that's included in this bid also. It's all together.
How's the officer that was involved in that? Is he okay?
Yes, he was fine. He he didn't have any injuries.
Okay.
It needs to come out of what, police department budget?
Yes, our finance director helps out there, and she figured it out.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the purchase of a two thousand twenty-five Dodge Durango Pursuit Vehicle for the Arkansas City Police Department from Superior Emergency Response Vehicles in addition to required wiring systems, utility car camera packages, and vinyl decals from various suppliers for an amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
City manager updates.
On September thirtieth, Josh and I were attended the flood risk mapping meeting in Winfield. The preliminary floodplain maps are are out now, and so we had a chance to to go over those and provide comments. So there's, for the most part, I don't think staff's disagreeable with what they presented. There's a few areas, though, that that we felt like needed, we need to comment on and didn't feel like it was accurate. So again, these are just kind of drafts. I gave you, Joe, a copy of the PowerPoint Friday. I think Commissioner Spillman got hers tonight, so you can take a look at that. But there's some areas kind of just south of Kansas, on the west side of, no, excuse me, east side of town, that we feel like are, and it's what it is, it's interior drainage flooding is what that's from. There's no issues from the levee, we're pretty well protected from that. But so there were some areas there that staff hasn't seen any problems with in the past, but so we made some comments on that. And then I think there's some things down, they've added some things on the south side, kind of right here warehouse there on Lincoln. But for the most part, it's pretty accurate. There's a few areas that we felt like, we just need to make comments that we felt like needed some changes, so.
So what kind of changes down there, south end of town, would be?
Well, again, they added some areas, some areas right in there for interior flooding. And again, it's the possibility of flooding from the drainage within the city in certain circumstances, so. The, it appears that, and again, we're still doing the levee certification, but appears all the levee, the areas with the levee protection are all in good shape. It's just when it rains, it becomes a bowl inside the city because we're protected with the levee. And if you have to shut those gates off, the levee drain out, then there's some areas that could potentially flood, so. So we'll keep working through that process, and I I think it'll be another year or so before they have the final approved maps for for the floodplain maps for the next ten years or so.
So when they get that done, will those areas be like in the floodplain or the floodway or anything?
It'd be more floodplain, it'd be floodplain, potentially, so. We'll see how the, how it turns out once all the comments are in and they, you know, have a chance to review those. So then on the fire station, the, we have, the RFPs out for that now. There will be a pre-conference, RFP pre-conference on the twentieth. With the contractors can meet with us and learn more about that, and then the proposals are due on November tenth. So as you recall, we we do have a pretty good idea of what it would cost to renovate the existing station, and this this exercise is to try to get bids on what it would cost to build a new station, so we can have some comparisons of what's more cost, you know, feasible for us to do.
Do they have to have a a location plan before they design the station, or can they just design it and then adapt it to the the site?
Yeah, so pretty much it can be adapted to the site, but the site we've given them at this point is a preliminary place to look, would be on east, east Kansas there by the greenhouse.
Which gives access to the bypass, which would be very, you can get to anywhere in town off of Kansas, the bypass very quickly, and that'll also help Strether Field.
Yeah.
So, but again, that those things can be changed as we get through it, but that's kind of the preliminary area we're looking at, so.
Seven minutes, Strether Field, right there is what Chief said.
And then the, we got the RFP going out for the splash pad. We do have, we've been working with one contractor, so we have a a pretty good idea on on the scope of the project and the cost. They they had provided a cost of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, which we do have available within the CIP funds. So we'll try to get some additional bids from other contractors and see what that comes in at. But we'll have some, we'll have that for the engineer in a couple of meetings, have, with the idea of having that up and running by spring.
Nice.
And then on the water well number sixteen, I think it's pretty well, construction's done. We're waiting on KDHE to inspect, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll cover sixteen, so I'll inspect that. So that should go online shortly after that, then, huh? Yeah. Yeah. So, the East Pressure Zone, so we're still waiting on the preliminary plans and specs. There's, they're projected mid-October now, and and then we'll get that to city staff for review, and then that that should, then I'll have to go to KDHE for approvals and things before we can go out to bid on that, but that's moving along, so slowly. The Sea Clip Project, the plans and estimates, we'll get those again mid, well, sometime this next week, we'll get the the plans and estimates on that. So that's the the Mill and Overlay from Eighth Street out to the bridge, that Sea Clip Project. And then the project out at Strether Field, we're relocating the utilities out there. So basically, closing or shutting down the wastewater treatment plant at Strether Field, and then and then building a pipe to here to Patterson Park, where we'll treat the wastewater from Strether Field. So that's still in progress and working through. I sent out letters for easement, and I received back one easement recently, and I haven't heard back from the other property owner yet, so we'll have to make, reach back out and see where they're at. We just talked about the water treatment plant. If you recall, when EPA was in a few weeks ago to inspect the wastewater treatment plant, one of the things they found was we didn't have a stormwater prevention plan out there. And so PEC's been working on that with staff, and so I believe the draft plan is completed, and I think if it's not here already, it'll be coming soon for for the city review. So we're working through that. That's something EPA is. If it's not here already, it'll be coming soon for, for the city review. So we're, we're working through that. Um, that's something EPA has asked us to do. And we've been given a timeline to get that done. So, going on that. And. There is a application, uh, submitted to K dot for the fall, um, cost share program. That'll be, uh, for Millen overlay up north. Um, up around the skyline and, uh, ready lane area. And.
How soon will we hear about that grant?
Sometime in the fall, we should hear something.
Okay, this year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then the F Street Bridge, uh, so that's project still slowly creeping along. Uh, right now we're kind of held up with, uh, the railroad and, and working within a certain amount, distance from the railroad tracks. And so they're working through some permitting on that. But, uh, that, that project is still moving. We still have the grant.
We need to, we need to just take all railroads out of the Arc City and get rid of it. It's so much slower.
Yeah. So, but hopefully next year you'll start seeing and get that, get that bridge replaced. And that's kind of a big thing that we got.
So it sounds we've got a lot of, a lot of irons in the fire and I know it, it goes slow, but hopefully we'll be seeing some, uh, progress. We're, we're, we're about to start seeing some progress.
Yeah, we're in the right direction.
Yeah. Alright, thank you, Randy. Um, commissioners, anything that needs to be brought to attention?
I want to say one thing in National Night Out last night. I want, thank Chief and his police department and volunteers. It, it was a wonderful venue and. A big crowd. People ate a lot of food and we all got wet. I mean soaked.
How, how long did you stay there last night?
Um, I think we finally got out there about seven o'clock.
Okay. Cause when I left after the forum last night, it was, it was dark. There was nothing there.
I think it started raining about six thirty.
Yeah.
It came down pretty good around six thirty, didn't it?
Yeah.
At least the fire engines got cleaned.
Yeah. They did have a push in today.
Yes.
So I missed that one. I know you told me to be there and I forgot all about it. I s- I did see it. So thank you though.
Yeah, because you weren't there to push it. They strove.
It took a while. They had to turn it on.
Had to back it in, actually.
Uh, audience members. Okay.
So the first step we have.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Commission and mayor and yes, I'm honored to stand here. And produce for you my latest library card. My latest library card came all the way from Maine. In Maine. You have to be a property owner to get one of those. Maybe there are some things we could do in Arc City. Maybe. R O P. Stands for realms of. Opportunity or realms of progress or realms of. We're going to have an election. I was distressed last night with the lack of voter turnout. At the chamber meeting that there were more people. In that meeting than are in this room tonight. But there weren't enough. If you're going to register to vote. I insist that not less than a hundred percent voter turnout is the only acceptable standard for a voter. The realms of. Progress. What can happen in the next fiscal year? Well, we have the election occurring. And I saw the list of properties. I saw the list of properties flashing on the screen. And maybe, just maybe, the commission. After the election needs to decide if the library is a department of this city or not. Because the library wasn't listed as a piece of property that this commission oversees. And I understand why. I understand why. But it's almost like you hate the library. Because I remember April the first. And I remember. A library director sitting in that chair, staying in this room. She felt like a stepchild. And I disagreed with that assessment. Because the November election. Led me to believe that we aren't a stepchild. The library is really an orphan. I remember Brownie, Michael Brown. And George Bush saying. What a good job he was doing during Katrina. And within thirty days of that statement, they fired him. And I'm real resistant. I don't like hearing people brag on me. Because. I remember the commission saying, I am in favor of police fire. E M S and emergency management and they fire him. I remember the, the fire department getting a nice new fire truck. And having a budget reduction in that budget. The Northwest Community Center. Is a vacant building now, going back to my statement. At this very lecture. Government's great about building nice stuff and then not keeping it up. So we have a building that could be used for something. And. It used to be a hangout for kids, I thought, but it's not now. And in my experience. I remember on my caseload. A sixteen year old. Applying for Medicaid in Oklahoma who was pregnant. By a boyfriend.
Mr. Coulson, you have thirty seconds.
Thank you.
I just like giving you heads up.
Okay. Thank you. I was going to ask for a full minute time. I didn't get that far. I will tell you that child became pregnant because she brought her boyfriend home and they had. Intercourse in the mom and dad's bedroom while they were off at work after school. I appreciate your time. There will be more.
Thank you, sir.
Be blessed.
Any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Mickey would like to speak.
Um, well, let's just continue from there. Is this a place that one will answer questions?
They are not required to answer questions.
They aren't required to answer a question?
Not required to.
Got it. Public comment.
So there's seven of you that have been involved. In deciding on, and one of you was there last night when you heard me say, well, two of you. But you're all the seven that won't give me an answer on. What I plan to do is rent the Northwest Community Center and begin a series. Of discussions with the public. So. Randy told me last Friday, when I asked him numerous times. Would you go with me and talk to Cindy? There's another of you that was deeply entrenched in this. And if you recall, I stopped coming here to tell the whole story. Okay? Just like you told me a few years ago, there's always two sides to the story. That young lady right there watched some of it. He and she saw some of it. We will make the Northwest Community Center a functional facility. Whether the seven of you will allow it to happen or not. Okay? It's gonna happen. And if you have anything to say, I will stand here for the duration of my time.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask me?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mickey, there are some of us that are doing things that you don't know about.
Because nobody wishes to talk about it with any.
Let, let her, let her respond.
Uh, my hope and my thought is it is now time for our churches in this area. We have thirty churches plus in the area. Maybe they can step up and help us with this situation by providing a group of people.
Why does it have to be a church?
I'm gonna.
Have you ever worked for Y M C A or Boys and Girls Club? Do you know how they operate?
No, I don't because there are none here. And there's not going to be any here.
How far as Wichita? I'm not saying bring them to run it because you and I have had this conversation. Matter of fact, all of you seven.
Mickey, have you, have you received a letter saying that you're not, that you're not going to be allowed to do that?
He told me.
You have received that letter?
He told me on Friday.
As long as I'm here, you will not be working with the children of this community.
I didn't say I was working with them. Somebody can work with them and Cindy clearly wasn't doing a very good job.
Well, I don't understand what you want here. You got what you wanted. You went by, you gave her a hard time. You told her.
Oh, it's all my fault now. It's all my fault. The Northwest Community Center is ruined.
That's not what I'm saying.
Yes, you are.
Your opportunity to do it is your fault.
What if I bring you the money?
I will not have you involved in it.
There you go. That.
At all.
I could bring you a million dollars and you're going to say no. This is why I run for the city commission because you seven people. Who have never really done anything outside this community need somebody who's not from around here to help you out. Thank you.
I'm a wee adjourned. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you, guys. I apologize for that out first.